Good morning. Welcome to Tuesday, the 11th day of August 2020, Weber County Board of Commissioners meeting. Commissioner Gage-Fror with me, to my left Commissioner Scott Jenkins, to my right Commissioner Jim Harvey. We're going to start today with the Pledge of Allegiance with Melissa Freegang. Invocation will be given by Sean Wilkinson. I'll give the thought of the day, and then we'll go to public comments. So let's go to that point.
Please stand and join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible and just as for all.
The justice and justice.
Our Father in Heaven, we thank thee for the opportunity to come before thee this morning. We thank thee for the beauty that surrounds us. We thank thee for the opportunity we have of living and working here in Weber County. We thank thee for the bounteous blessings that we receive and that we acknowledge thy hand in, and we pray for those who have experienced difficulty and loss during this pandemic and the hard times that have come with that. We pray that each of us may do our part to help lift others and to do good in our community. Again, we thank thee for all of the many blessings that we have and pray that we may show gratitude by the way that we act, and we ask for this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Sean. Okay. I guess I'm giving the thought of the day. Commissioners? So my thought of the day has to do with change and how we deal with it. As we all know, we've had some major changes over the past several months, and my opinion, I think Weber County is doing a great job at dealing with the change. I remember one of my classes back in graduate school where I learned about change. And what happened at that point in time, that particular class, it wasn't out of a book, it was real life. We were put together in groups and told to come up with a project, I forget exactly what the project was, that was going to be about 90% of our grade. So we worked, oh, I think we worked as a team for four to five weeks. Professor walked in one morning and said, okay, there's been a change. All your groups are dissolved, you're going to have a new group. So everybody that you just worked with for the past four or five weeks, collaborated with, come up with your plan, they're no longer on your team. You're going to start fresh, and you only have a week and a half to complete your project or you all are not going to pass this class. This was a management class I had to pass or I wouldn't have made it. So it kind of goes with what I've seen as change. The first reaction to most people with change is to fight it, and then they deny it, and then they deal with it. And that's what we did. But it was a great lesson to me that the best thing to do when you have change is, what I was told by a number of people, is you take the lemons and make lemonade. And quite frankly, I think that's what we've done as a county. I looked at this past weekend for the Weber County Fair. We started off and didn't have a decision made as far as what we were going to do, if we didn't even have a fair. That was the debate. Because of the change, we made a decision to change how the fair was put together. I think this past weekend, at least in my opinion, proved to me that we made lemonade. Everybody I've talked to in the county out there, a number of old friends, new friends, thanked us for having it, having the foresight not to cancel the fair, not to follow what other people had done because of the change, because they feared change. So commissioners, we embrace the change, in my opinion, Weber County, and we're doing this on a daily basis. And because of that, the residents of Weber County had a great experience this past weekend. So that's my thought of the day. Don't be afraid of change, embrace it, and don't be afraid to make decisions based upon what we think's right, not just because other people may look at us and say that it's not right. We need to make that determination ourselves. So that's my thought, commissioners. Let's go now to the public comments. I don't think we have any comments on Zoom, according to Shelley. I don't see any coming through. Make sure here.
She said there weren't any Zoom participants or comments.
I think we're good. Okay. Public comments from the audience. Anybody, members of the public, that would like to come forward? Okay. Thank you for being here. Last chance. Let's go then to our consent items, F1 through 10. I believe all these will still be dealt with, I haven't been told otherwise. So let's start with Consent Items. One, request for approval of warrants 2955 through 2977 and 451-349 through 451-501 in the amount of $856,209.07. Two, request for approval of purchase orders in the amount of $80,719.58. Three, request for approval of minutes for the meetings held on July 28th and August 4th, 2020. Four, request for approval of new business licenses. Five, request for approval of ACH payment to U.S. Bank in the amount of $238,387.08. Six, request from the Golden Spike Event Center for approval to surplus 2007 EZ Go Golf Kart. Seven, request for approval to sell surplus property, parcels number 192512 and 192557. Eight, request for approval to sell surplus real property, parcel number 3749. And nine, request for approval of a contract buying between Weber County and Owasatch Front Regional Council for community block grant business assistance. And finally, 10, request for approval of a contract buying between Weber County and Wholesome Movies LLC to be used library property as a location for filming. That's the consent items. Commissioners, questions, comments, before we go to Ricky? Anything? Okay, Ricky, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We issued 12 purchase orders this week for $81,000. 29% of that amount, or $24,000, is for the Golden Spike Event Center. That's primarily to purchase concessions for upcoming events as well as some janitorial supplies. 25% or $20,000 is for the jail, and that will go to purchasing gloves. 22% or $18,000 is for the garage, and that's for retrofitting of vehicles for parks and rec. As far as checks, we issued 176 checks for $856,000. These were spread across a bunch of purchases, no major ones this month or this week. 16% or $134,000 is related to the parking structure demolition. 13% or $112,000 is for the roads department, and that went to buy shipping oil and asphalt supplies. 9% or $75,000 is our semi-annual payment to Economic Development Corporation of Utah. 8% or $73,000 is for the jail, and that purchased food, some utilities, paid utilities, as well as some building maintenance. 8% or $67,000 paid for employee life and disability assurance, insurance, and 77% or $58,000 is for the library that went to books and materials, some software maintenance as well as utilities. And then we had two purchases that were accounted for 5% of the total amount, about $44,000. First one was for our Homeland Security Fund or Department. That was hazardous air monitoring equipment. And then another one for parks and rec, and those went to improvements at North Fork Park. And that's all.
Thank you, Ricky. Questions on any of the consent items or questions for Ricky?
I do have.
Go ahead.
So Ricky, I asked you two questions, the one you answered, 127. What was the other one?
Was it regarding the hazardous air monitoring equipment for Homeland Security?
Yes, that was it.
Yes, and that went through the PO process and was passed, I want to say, two weeks ago. But that's purchased, and we believe it was purchased through grant funding.
Either that or it was the oil, and we determined the oil was correct.
That's right.
Okay, that's great. Thank you.
Additional questions or comments? If not, I entertain a motion.
So I do have one more question. You know, it's funny, we get into here and things stop working. Item number seven says approval of sale surplus real property, and it lists a couple of numbers, and that's it. Doesn't tell you what they are. And you click on that 250057 and it won't come up. I checked all the other ones before we came in here today, and I just didn't think to do that one.
Would you like me to speak to that, Commissioner?
Yeah.
Come on up.
I'd like to at least know what it is. I mean, we have surplus real property occasionally.
Commissioner, those two pieces are pieces of property in Plain City that Plain City would like to purchase from the county. So we've talked about these previously, and they were declared surplus two weeks ago. So that's what that is.
So these are a couple of long skinny pieces, long fence lines, that they're going to use to complete parcels to subdivide or something like that.
Correct. That's right.
I do remember these now.
Yep. And the other one, the 3749, is the piece of property the county owns on 21st Street that we are going to be selling as well. We talked about that one last week. That was declared surplus several years ago, but we have an agreement to sell that property.
Good.
Okay. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Yeah. My link's working, it pulls up both the tax data on both of those.
Does it?
Yep.
Well, maybe it's got them working now.
So it does pull it up. So that answers the question. The first two were in Plain City, the last one's on 21st Street. We talked about these at least a week or two ago.
Last week yours worked and mine Harvey's didn't. This week, I don't believe ours are working, is that right?
Really?
Yours works.
Mm-hmm.
Are you paying somebody, or do you know something here we don't know?
Yeah, Quinn takes care of me, I guess. I don't know. Maybe just refresh your screen.
Well, I'll do that.
I don't know. Okay. With that, additional questions, comments? If not, I'm ready for a motion.
I'd make a motion that we approve the consent items, F1 through 10, as presented.
Thank you. We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Consent items are approved. Let's go to action items. G1, request for approval of final reading of an ordinance of Weber County amending certain fees to the Weber County Fee Ordinance for the ice sheet. I think this is the second reading. Mariko, come on up. Thank you.
Hi, how are you guys?
Good, how are you?
Good. If there are no questions, I'll ask for approval of the amended fees of the ice sheet.
Additional questions for Mariko?
I had a chance to review those, they look good, and I'd recommend, commissioners, that we take Ms. Rollins' counsel on this and approve these, the second reading as presented.
Second.
I'll make that in the form of a motion.
Is that a motion? Hey, we do have a motion. Do we have a second?
Commissioners, it's ordinance 13. Commissioner Harvey?
Aye.
Commissioner Jenkins?
Aye.
Jeff-Fror?
Aye. Thank you. Carries, thank you, Mariko. Appreciate you being here. Let's go to action item G2, request for approval of a contract by and between Weber County and Staker Parsons Materials and Construction for Asphalt Paving at the Weber County Transfer Station. Mr. Wilkinson?
Thank you. Commissioners, this contract is for paving a few areas out at the transfer station. There's an area just west of our C and D loading area, also the driveway that the trucks that haul our waste use, and an expansion of one lane that will allow people easier access into the tipping floor for the general public. So those are the three areas that are part of this contract. The total amount is $38,438.45. We did put this out for bid, and Staker Parsons won that bid, and the contract is before you for approval.
Great. Thank you, Sean. Questions for Sean?
Yes. Can you tell me about, a little more about that one lane expansion to make it easier to access the tipping floor?
Yes.
I know our garbage fees are, excuse me, the amount of traffic at our transfer station has increased substantially this year, and so can you help people to understand what that is?
Sure. Just past the scale house as you round the corner to go back west before you take the left turn to go into the tipping floor. That's always been a place where people get held up depending on how much traffic there is. And now we can, for those that have prepaid, or depending on if they're going to the C and D lane or to the tipping floor, we can help direct traffic. Now we'll have two lanes, and things will flow much better.
Won't that push the bottleneck to the entrance of the tipping floor? Because oftentimes when I'm there, it's usually pretty full in there.
We will, yeah. With the setup that we have now, we will have some bottlenecks, but we hope that this speeds things up, and it will eliminate the bottleneck just past the scale. And that's been part of the problem, because we need to keep people moving through the scale.
You've done a wonderful job. You know, if people haven't visited our transfer station in the last 12 months, as far as the way that you process people through there, it's improved a lot, and I appreciate that.
Thank you. I'll pass that on. I have not done that. That has been John Watson and his team, and I will definitely pass that on to them.
Please.
Thank you.
Additional questions for Sean? If not, I'm ready for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion that we approve the contract buying between Weber County and Staker Parsons for the asphalt paving at the transfer station.
Great, thank you. And do we have a second?
I will second that with a comment.
Go ahead.
You notice we're paying to have this done, but we run a full crew and they're in the middle of doing this right now. One of the reasons we're paying is because we've cut ourselves so short, we have no excess capacity.
You're talking about the roads department?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Once again, we're paying somebody to do something that we should be doing and just can't because we're so short.
Second.
Okay. Appreciate that comment. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
Let's go to item three, discussion and/or action on a request for final approval of Arrowhead Meadow Subdivision Phase 1, including a request for approval of a subdivision improvement agreement for the amount of $29,612.50. Felix, you're up. Thank you.
Yes, thanks, commissioners. Good morning. As you mentioned, this is a request for final approval of Arrowhead Meadow Subdivision. We've worked them through the Planning Commission to get the approvals they need. We've gone through, and the engineering department has reviewed their civil drawings. We've, as planning staff, we've assured, we've made sure that the development has been designed to meet subdivision and zoning standards. And this, each lot within this, it's a two-lot subdivision, each lot will have culinary facilities via a well, so each lot will have a well, and then a septic system for each With this, the planning staff recommends final approval with the conditions stated in the staff report. And we do have the applicant here with us today, or I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any more.
Any questions for Felix? You say that petitioners here?
That's correct.
You'd like to come up and, you have anything you'd like to add, or are you okay?
I'm good. If you guys have any questions, let me know.
Okay. Any questions for either Felix or the petitioner? Doesn't look like it, Felix.
None from me, Mr. Chair. And I'd like to make the motion that we approve the final approval for the Arrowhead Meadow Subdivision Phase 1.
Thank you.
Presented by Mr. Yavarino.
Thank you. We have--
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you. Thanks, Felix. Go to item four, request for approval of a memorandum of understanding buying between Weber County and Western Governors University to receive a grant for the Prosperity Center of Excellence. Presenter, Melissa Freegang.
Good morning. This is a contract with Western Governors University. As you probably already know, they provide fluoride scholarships for our IGP participants in our Integrated Community Action Now intervention. This grant, they're very interested in partnering with us. The memorandum of understanding is for $100,000 a year for the next five years, and we're really excited about partnering with them and continuing to move forward on interventions and innovating with our IGP participants in the county.
Great. Questions or comments?
I think we have two that have gone to college already?
Yes, two are already enrolled.
Yeah, so we're already starting to take advantage of this, and we're just approving it today. So this is pretty cool.
So this is the second or grant or?
Well, we have two individuals in the grant.
Oh, all right. Got it.
We have about eight students who are in the application process and entering, and interested in entering into Western Governors. So they provide already the scholarships for the participants to enroll in school and be actively involved. This is for a resource integration coach and other costs to continue to work on this intervention.
These people that are in there, these two that are in the program right now, nobody in their family has ever attended college. So this will be the process. This is what's necessary to break the cycle of intergenerational poverty, and we're finally doing it. So here we go.
You say we've got two in this program now?
Two right now. Oh, pretty cool.
Really cool, and the fact that it's $400,000 a year for five years.
No, no, $100,000 a year.
Yeah, 104 or 5 years.
Okay. He was missing a page or two.
Sorry. I can take it off.
Yeah, it's $100,000, right?
Correct.
I meant what she did.
Yes.
Okay. I think we understand. All right, commissioners, additional questions or comments?
I'd make a motion that we approve the contract between Weber County and the Western Governors University.
Okay. Thank you. Was that a second? Okay, we had a second. I think I heard. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Good work. Okay, let's go to our last item, five, reconsideration of the decision to amend Weber County Code 104-7 and 108-7 to allow cultivation and processing of cannabis cultivation in the A2 zones dated August 4th, 2020. Charlie, did you want to talk about this? We have that ordinance in front of us, commissioner. I'm assuming we had a good discussion on this last week. There was a little confusion on the final motion, so we're here today to correct that. And what this does would allow cultivation in an A2 zone, but only one unless they came forward and asked basically, put an application in for, be the second or third or whatever that may be.
That's right.
Knowing that that's probably very rare and it happened, knowing that the state has only approved eight throughout the entire state. And in my conversations with some people at the state over the last couple of weeks, there's no intention right now, at least what they've told me, to increase that for the time being. That doesn't mean it can't happen in the future, but I think it's, they're going to basically see how these current eight work, see what the supply and demand work out to be, and then review this in the next year to two years. So--
That's right, Commissioner. I don't have a whole lot to say unless you guys have questions for me. The posting is, says the word processing, however, what the changes that are being made won't allow processing in the A2 zone. So just want to make sure that was clear.
Yeah, that was a question I had. Really, it's cultivation--
Just cultivation.
In that we're approving this ordinance. So processing, I know Commissioner Jenkins brought up this concern about smell. This would be a cultivation or a grow only, and from my experience, there's, the smell comes from the processing as that's dried and processed. So I don't think we have to worry about that, plus--
And elsewhere in that same section, if you see just a couple of lines above, it talks about scrubbing. So if there's any part of that growing that does produce an odor, they're going to need to scrub the exhaust coming out of these greenhouses, and it's all inside, all inside greenhouses or buildings.
Good. Okay, questions?
You might notice on page two, under C2, we requested that he put this in, it says, "No more than one cannabis production establishment is allowed to be operated in an A2 zone at any one time." So unless we decide to change that, he added that. Anyway, I appreciate that, Charlie.
You bet. Happy to do so.
So basically, it would be an ordinance change if somebody came forward, would be an ordinance change to this particular A2.
That's absolutely right.
Which I feel really comfortable with.
Okay.
That way, if it's going to, it can't get away from us, if it's going to be changed, we have to change.
Correct.
I like that.
Okay.
Great. We realize that at the conclusion, where I think you've done some good work. I know it's all been reviewed, and I'm good with it, Mr. Chair. It was good enough to the point where I'll make a motion.
All right, that's good then.
Commissioners, if you don't mind, there's a particular process, according to our rules of order, to deal with a motion to reconsider.
Oh.
Would you like me to go over that rule prior to the motion?
Yeah, could you? I should have caught that, where it's reconsideration, yeah.
So state statute is actually silent on how to address a motion to reconsider, however, case law does address it. Courts will, if a dispute comes up about reconsideration motions, courts will actually enforce a county's own written rules of order in following that process. So we do address that in the commission's rules of order and procedure. And so it's really critical with a motion to reconsider, there is an issue of timing because we want to ensure finality to issues. And so if it, if an issue goes too long before it's reconsidered, you're going to have to go through the entire process again of holding public hearings, presenting this to the planning commission. However, since this item was heard last week, you are allowed to reconsider it. It either has to be reconsidered during the meeting at which the item is presented or at the next scheduled commission meeting. And so the reconsideration motion is timely. Now, if the commission had voted, did not vote unanimously, only a member who voted in the majority can vote for a motion to reconsider, because again, we want to make sure that items are final. I believe all of the commissioners voted in favor of this, so any member of the commission can make that motion to reconsider. What will happen is you will do the motion to reconsider, and then you will follow that up with a subsequent motion. It basically puts the original matter back on the table, so there will be two motions.
Correct. Got it.
Any other, any questions that I can answer?
Chris, thanks for that clarification. I was wondering, so commissioners, that's, obviously we need a motion to reconsider if we're willing to address this. We'll place a vote on that and then look at the ordinance motion in a separate motion.
Correct. So, Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion that we reconsider ordinance 2020-12 from last week's agenda.
Thank you for that. We have a motion to reconsider our action of last week. Do we have a second?
Second.
And we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So the motion to reconsider has passed. Let's move now to the consideration or action on the amendment for the ordinance as presented by Charlie, 2020-12.
I'd make a motion that we put, authorize the ordinance 2020-12 to be put on this week's agenda, which it already was, but according to Chris, we should have authorized it.
Right. Well, I believe now that you've done the motion to reconsider, the original matter is properly before you, so I think you can make a final motion to address--
So I think we can go right to approval of the ordinance, Commissioner. Isn't that right, Chris?
That is correct. You can go to the final--
The motion to reconsider was taken. It passed, so now we're back to action on Agenda Item 5, which would be the ordinance.
Correct. And I believe with the way that it was noticed, saying it would, the public was given proper notification that we were going to be relooking at this issue, so I don't see any issues with the noticing of this.
And, you know, let me just state, I think there was just some confusion in terms of the final wording. I think we all agreed that the intent was that it be A2, and somewhere in the translation it was lost, but I think it was all our understanding, at least my understanding, that we were voting on the exclusion for, permission for A2 zone, and it got transferred to the entire county.
And that happens from time to time in every county that has rules regarding this. The legislature has rules regarding this. There's just, it's just a standard thing that happens from time to time, so.
Yeah, really, this is kind of, anyway.
So I do have a question about this. No, we're on.
Go ahead.
Well, Charlie, in effect, what this is going to do is, it's going to allow only one operation in an A2. What about an A3?
So it's silent on that. So right now, the code doesn't put a limit on how many can operate in the A3 zone or the M3 zone or the M1 or M2 zones.
So we could put on here, operation in the A2 or A3.
Only one operation, A2 or A3. Yes, you could do that. I can go make those changes really quick, just a couple keystrokes and get that for you to sign today if you're ready.
And as a matter of statutory construction, when I would look at something like that, if the legislative body specifically said it was only, no more than one in an A2 zone, and they deliberately left out the others, then I would view that as, it wouldn't be prohibited. I would, I would want to look at that much more closely. So if you know what you want to do, I would say now is the time to.
Do we have any existing in A3?
No.
Okay.
So we had two operations in the county. Where's the other one?
We've got one operation that I'm aware of right now in the county. We've got another that was considering going into the M1 zone. I don't recall whether or not they've actually executed in the M1 zone. I'm not aware of anyone proposing anything in the A3 zone at this time.
In the A3?
In the A3 zone.
Well, last, last week when we left the meeting, I thought you came up and said, basically, we've made a mistake here because we already have one.
We already have one in operation in the M3 zone. Correct. So the applicant of this would make for the second operation in the unrecuperated area of the county.
And that's in an M3 manufacturing zone?
Mm-hmm. That's M3. That, that other one in existence, yes.
So what's the difference between A2 and an A3?
It's intensity of agriculture. So A3 is supposed to be heavier intensity agriculture. It's more agricultural industry. The A3 zone allows residential dwelling units at one unit to the two acres, where the A2 zone allows residential dwelling units at one unit to 40,000 square feet. So a little bit more of a residential area. So I wouldn't recommend processing in the A2 zone, but I would definitely consider growing in the A2.
I don't want processing. I'd rather not have processing anywhere. That's the smell.
Unfortunately, state code requires that we allow for that in either A3 or M3.
So it doesn't appear to me that it's really important that we do this, but to stay consistent with what we've done, if we put this in, it would actually allow for another grower to come in if they could find an A3 spot to put it.
A3, M3.
That's correct.
M1, M2. Oh, sorry, grower isn't allowed in M1, M2, but A3 in M3, yes.
Frankly, I'm not really down on growing. You know, but we do have two, two out of the eight in the state here now, so, I mean, we're shouldering our, our fair share.
I agree.
And I think I'll leave it the way it is, as far as I'm concerned.
I mean, somebody would have, if somebody did make an application, A3, they'd still have to come for us for approval, at which, at which time we could, if we decided to prove it, we could limit that to that one, just like we've done here with the A2.
So approval in the A3 zone is actually allowed by conditional use permit. The planning commission right now is the authority for that, yeah. If you guys would like to see another modification to this to limit the A3 zone, I can get with Chris Crockett, and we could do a little bit of research to make sure that we're even allowed to make that restriction. I'm not entirely certain we are right now, just because of the way the state code is written, where we have to allow it in one agricultural zone and one manufacturing zone. I don't know the totality of how that works. And so if you're comfortable moving forward with this today and then asking us to relook at the A3 zone, we can certainly do that and bring something to you later.
I, I think that's the way we should head. I mean, I don't think we have anybody knocking on our door for an A3. We've got plenty of time. I just want to make sure we don't get in a conflict with state code.
Sure.
In fact, Mr. Chair?
Yep.
If I may?
Go ahead.
Mr. Crockett, the fact that we took the earlier motion a while ago to reconsider, will we still be, are we still okay if we were to take, have Charlie take a look at that?
Sure. Well, if you want to look at this current ordinance that's being proposed right now and make changes to it now, I think you would be fine to table that because the original matter is back before you. It's as if you never took action in the first place. You've already met the requirements of the public hearings having to go before the planning commission. If you want to pass the ordinance as is and you're thinking of future changes, say in, you know, six months to a year, then I think you're fine. You're just going to have to go through the process of amending the entire ordinance again, going through the applicable provisions in the land use code for, you know, presenting to the planning commission, hold your public hearings and all of that. So if you know the changes now, it's much easier.
Oh, that's just what I was going to say, too. So to make this change on the fly and add or A3, it is pretty, two words. Sure.
And we can, if you want to do that, we can get in, make sure the state code allows for that. I mean, and if it doesn't allow for that, it just would be held unenforceable. And so then we can come back to you to make that quick amendment.
Yeah, we've got time, in my opinion, to deal with the A3. And I just assume, make sure that we have a consensus, both with the state and what we're action. You know, the petitioner was here last week, and I think we made some, some declarations that we were okay with this in the A2. So my, my preference is to move forward on this. We have plenty of time on the A3. I know the petitioner's here. Would you have, would you like to come up and talk to the commissioner this time, or?
If you'd like me to.
Go ahead.
My name is Seth Gom. I represent the applicant. With respect to the code itself, I do have some knowledge on that, if it's helpful. If I recall, each jurisdiction, being a municipality or county, needs to provide one location in both an industrial, is what they say, and an agricultural zone for each of those uses. Obviously pharmacies are another set of code all by itself. And so I think you'd be in compliance with what you're suggesting already. If you wanted to further fine tune it, you can further limit it as much as you like, and it wouldn't jeopardize what the code says, as long as it's, it's permitted in each one of those industrial and agricultural zones. Do you have any questions I can answer?
Questions?
It appears then, Charlie, we're in compliance, since we've got one, then this would be, if we did an A2 or, change that language, or A3, correct?
Correct. It sounds like it. And honestly, Seth would be probably the consultant I would call if he wasn't the applicant.
So I do have a question.
Go ahead.
Actually, this appears like what we ought to do is, instead of say or A3, we ought to say and. That ties the two together. So if you say, "Operation in the A2 and A3 zones at any one time." Zones, behind zone, we should make that plural and put an S there. And that ties, Mr. Crockett, that ties the two together. Actually, I really like that.
So are you suggesting and versus or?
Right.
Put an S there?
So behind A2, we put and A3, and then put zones with an S. That'd be plural at any one time, and that tie them together. With that, I'd make the motion we approve this with that change.
Okay, just so we're clear, or I'm clear. So the last sentence for C2 would read, "No more than one cannabis production establishment is allowed to be in operation in the A2 and A3 zone at any one time."
Zones.
Zones.
S between.
Zones.
Yes, at any one time.
Mr. Crockett, does that pass legal muster?
It would satisfy state statute as far as allowing at least an one agricultural zone, and we've already got the authorization in an industrial zone. I usually ask this outside of a public meeting format, but if it's something that you want to address today, I was, Charlie, are you okay with this use change?
I don't see any issues, but just wanted to make sure before we.
Yeah, I think it works.
Okay. Okay, Charlie, so you're okay with that, Charlie?
I am.
Doesn't, doesn't have unforeseen circumstances?
Not that I'm concerned about right now. I really don't see any issues.
Okay. Your motion, Commissioner?
Uh-huh. What about the petitioner? Do you have any issue with that?
I don't. I think it's.
Okay. Yeah, that's my motion, Mr. Chair.
To me, that clarifies it. I mean, we're only allowed, only required in a, one in an agricultural. This takes care of that.
Right.
So I don't see an issue with that. Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion on that motion as amended? Ordinance as amended?
Do I need to take a rule call on that?
Right.
This is a, and I would just go ahead and do it, because it's as if the original ordinance was.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Harvey?
Aye.
Commissioner Jenkins?
Aye.
Chair Farr.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Charlie. Appreciate that. I think that gets us to where we want to be.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Let's go now to commissioners' comments. Commissioner Harvey, I know you've been chomping at the bit over there.
No comment, Mr. Chair.
Really?
That's what I was chomping at the bit, although.
What was that chomping I saw?
I appreciate both of you participating in the junior livestock auction at the fair. You both were very generous with your, your purchases, and I appreciate that very much.
Mr. Jenkins?
I think the way it's actually physically stated is champion at the bit. And so I am. I want you to know that I appreciate you two gentlemen working with me in regards to this unfair that we just held. I felt like we passed muster on it. We did it the way it should have been done, and we had lots and lots and lots of compliments because of it. And I think Commissioner Harvey will have a hard time moving that sale out of the, out of the floor of the center now out there, the Gold Spike Arena, because it was so well accepted. Man alive, we had a lot of people that come up and talked to us about what a good move that was.
Would you mind, there was one in particular who came up to you, a young man out of the valley who came up to you.
Oh, yeah. It was, let's see, his name was, in fact, I was going to talk to Sasha about putting that on our website. Let's see, you sent me a picture of that little feller. Do you want me to send it again? No, no, I got it here. I just got to find it.
Why he's looking for that picture?
Right there. Bridger Lopshire. Man, he's a good little kid. He walked up in the middle of nowhere, without his parents or anything. He said, "Are you two commissioners?" We were sitting there, me and Commissioner Harvey, and I said, "We are commissioners." He said, "I want to thank you guys for holding this and for what you do for us." And he says, "This was really good." And he says, "It allowed me and my brothers to participate this." And anyway, just a really nice kid, I tell you. I wanted to give out, I reached out and gave him a hug. Reminded me of one of my grandkids, you know? Anyway, good kid. So Bridger Lopshire was his name, and he's just a wonderful individual. I was way impressed. Thank you, Commissioner, for reminding me of that.
Yeah, that's, it was, I think, it was, it was great to sit there, especially knowing the history, the whole thing, and have him come up and do that. It was really great. You know, I will say, commissioners, the all-time high number of animals we've ever had at the fair was 318 in 2018, 319, excuse me. In 2018, we had 319 animals. This year, in 2020, we had, and keep in mind that some of the animals are started already for 2021. If you're going to participate in the Junior Livestock Show, you're going to do beef, you've already started. But we had 337 this year. So we're up almost, not quite 10%.
Really?
But that, you know, that doesn't necessarily mean people, but animals sold. So we did really well. The prices were really high for the kids. They were most always up four times the floor price. And so that just shows that businesses are still anxious to participate in that program and help the kids do that. And I would, any parent that may watch this at any future time, I'd strongly encourage you to get your kids involved in the 4H program and the Junior Livestock Program for what it teaches. It teaches kids to come up and, and say thank you. You know, that's just part of the thing, you know, just like was said. And so what a wonderful program. Glad, glad that we could, as a body, unitedly get behind it and support those, those families that participate there.
Yeah, and that's exactly right. It was a family. In fact, Lopshires, I think, had five or six kids. In fact, Bridger's brother is the one that I inherited the goat from for some reason.
He did, well, we.
Wonder how smart that was, but.
But.
Questioning that every day. But, no, it's a great family there. They participate in the fair every year. I'm happy to support them on an ongoing basis and the rest of the community as well.
As you went through the list of animals, you've seen lots of Lopshires in there.
Yeah.
As you go through. So, you know, it's interesting, for me personally, I had two grandkids in there, which I boosted both of them, and then I represented two companies in there that bought animals. And it's interesting to watch what happens behind the scene. You sit out there, and I sat with my daughter and her husband for over half the time I was there, and they bought four or five animals. And when you look at the animals they're buying, they're buying animals of their friends and neighbors, because their friends and neighbors are buying their animals. And this turns into a community event, not just for the 4H and the kids in the 4H, but it turns into an event for all the people in the neighborhood, and it keeps them together and tied closely together. And it's hard to even understand the depth of where this goes. It is so broad and affects so many. Anyway, I just, I'm really proud to be part of it, and it tickles me to see these kids be successful.
Well, you know, and the other thing, too, is people think, well, gosh, I can't get involved in that with my kids because I don't have a place to keep a pig, or I don't have a place to keep a lamb. Well, Weber County School District does out there in Taylor, on a future school site, and they've got barns out there and feed and everything. So if you live in an apartment downtown and you've got kids and you want to get them involved, you can, even if you're in the Ogden City School District, you can take them out there and go to Chad Marriott out there at the, with the Weber School District, and they'll get you going and get you set up in this program and, and teach and work with you. It's a wonderful thing. So there's, all the roadblocks, no matter where you live, have been removed, so kids can have the opportunity to learn about livestock, and, and that milk doesn't come from the supermarket, but it comes from a cow, so to speak. Right?
If you don't mind, you know, it was interesting, this pig I bought from this, I think it was Brandon Leff. I'm trying to think of the young man's name. Anyway, I was talking to him about that, and I says, "So you got this pig out behind the house, or where do you raise this at?" And he says, "Well, we don't have that land." But he says, "Right down the street from me, there's a guy named Bell." And he says, I says, "Is that the Bell Photography bunch?" And he says, "Yeah, that's them." He says, "He told me I could keep that pig down there with his." And so he says, "That's where we do."